Do we have any needed executive sessions?
I think our discussion of Lister's office might carry over into a personnel matter for executive session.
So one personnel.
And we probably should discuss the rec department in personnel as well.
So two personnel, anything else?
That's all I've got.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're closed. Do we need to amend the agenda this evening?
I haven't got anything new.
I don't, anybody else? No? So I guess we need a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second, all those in favor say aye.
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 I've got a typo on the minutes, Mr. Chairman, these are September 4th minutes that we're supposed to be reviewing tonight.
Okay. On the minutes, we've got a correction on the minutes you said, a typo.
Oh, on actual agenda?
Yeah.
What's that on the agenda that you...
It says August 21st.
It says August 21st, that was the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Oh, well you've got a couple of things in the minutes, we'll get to them.
Well, yeah, it says I'm here.
Well, it says you are and you aren't.
I know.
You were pretty good, be both places.
I'm everywhere.
This is on September 4th.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, we need to adopt the minutes of September 4th.
Well, yeah, we gotta go, we have a couple of corrections, yeah. So, I need to come out of being present.
Yes.
Yep. I got you, absent.
And then, I don't know if it matters like long-term for the record, well, I'm on both rec, I'm both here and absent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I have to, and then, I don't know if it matters long-term for the record, but does, you know, the intersection near Kamutas, and it says that I stated it, but I stated it like to you, not in the meeting, I don't know if that matters long-term for, again, for the record, but just...
If you'd like, you can say you reported through the town manager.
Yeah, I just...
And then, the other thing I had was, and I didn't bring the minutes with me, in my discussion with Tim Rice from...
Wilk paving?
Wilk paving, he did not recommend, well, he didn't not recommend, but he didn't recommend that we do that, when I brought that up to him, he said that was another possibility.
Okay.
So it just, it reads like that was something, it was something I initiated and he said it was a possibility, so...
I can clean all of that up and not affect the signature page, if that's agreeable.
Yeah.
If that's agreeable, yep. All those in favor say aye then?
Just, Alicia, on your concern, it says selectman way reported to the town manager.
Okay, so if that seems clear, that I wasn't here.
Yeah.
That's, I just thought, between that with me actually being present, I thought it just seemed a little confusing.
I can understand that.
Well, it did, when I read it, it was confusing.
It says you reported it.
Okay, then, yeah, okay.
Right, but we will take, certainly all present.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that would clear it all up.
Yeah.
Okay.
All favors, adopting the minutes as corrected, we need to do that or we don't?
No.
No.
Just sign them.
Just sign them, okay. Yep.
There you go, sir.
You can't. You already signed it.
You can't do it.
Maybe she was her after.
I know.
No, she wasn't.
She'd confuse myself at this point.
Orders, any questions on the orders, we've got several tonight, we've got two tonight and the one that was in your package.
I've got a few.
Where do you want to start with?
Okay, you got twenty...
Which ones would we look at?
Tonight's, I don't have anything on tonight, previous one.
Previous, let's go with...
Yep, we got one seventy dollars Ray Bean for rear wheels.
Yep. What's your question?
You can't buy rear wheels for seventy dol, I mean, what happened?
Yeah. Take a look, I know that what happened is underlying issue is that there was the Western Star at the Florence Crush Stone site, getting loads for a project that the highway crew was doing, and one or two of the right rear wheels came off the truck, and it had to be towed in for service.
Okay.
So I don't know if Ray Bean was the towing company.
Well, now, you got, well, you go down to my next bunch of stuff, which is Earl's Truck Repair.
Okay.
You've got one for thirty-three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars, another for seventeen-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars, and another for four-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars.
Okay.
I know they were having trouble with the brakes on one of those trucks.
Yep.
But it doesn't look like a very old truck, so it seems, maybe it's older than it looks. I don't know how old that truck is.
The Western Star?
Yeah.
We just purchased that about a year ago.
So...
It's our new truck.
That's what I thought, so why, isn't, there's gotta be a warranty on some of this stuff, right, or not?
Absolutely. Tell me, which ones, which items you have in mind, I'll be happy to research that.
Well, it's oh-eight-twenty-five are all of them, and they're Earl's Truck Repair.
Okay.
There's thirty-three-thirty-two, there's one for seventeen-eighty-eight, and one for four-seventy-three.
Okay.
One of them looks, if I remember right, one of them is part, maybe a towing belt, so that may be what you're talking about, but you're looking at five thousand dollars to repair brakes, you can do an awful lot of brakes for five thousand dollars.
Yep.
I had that same question in mind, but you're asking it ahead of me, and that's good. But, in order, and somebody must have been a little bit neglectful not keeping an eye on them wheel locks to have that fall apart.
I did discuss it with the highway foreman, and they do have a regular maintenance program, which does involve checking on load nuts. I am told that with weather conditions, expansion contraction, and very heavy loads, and a lot of torque being put on the truck hauling out of Florence Crush Stone, that may have been the reason that we had this unforeseen event, but they do check them from time to time, I am told.
I have quite a lot of background with that kind of stuff myself. I assume those newer trucks are all pilot hole, what they call pilot hole hubs.
Okay.
And they're, Jesus, all you gotta do is walk around eyeball the damn things, and you can usually tell.
Unless...
And if that don't do it, you hear something squeaking, you better be stopping and checking. I don't know whether the boys make a habit of walking around their truck every day before they take it out of the garage and just eyeballing things or not, but commercial drivers are supposed to do what they call a pre-trip check.
Yep.
I'm not saying I do it all the time, because I don't.
I know what you mean, I know what you mean.
You may not want that on camera.
Bus drivers do it, pilots do it, it's a pre-use check.
Right, I make mistakes too, but, yeah.
Sure, sure. I will reinforce the importance of that.
Evidently, to be a thirty-three-hundred-dollar expenditure, they must have had to put a whole new hub, two new rims.
Well, but they were having, because I ran into it down at Kees', well, that must have been about the time of this, and you could smell the brakes were burning, they were having some kind of trouble with the brakes on it, too, because you could smell the brakes were burning.
And that stuff is so simple to take care of.
Well, I don't know what, yeah, I don't know what...
Was that on the freight liner or on the other one? They've got the brakes on the freight liner.
Was that the freight liner? Okay.
So the wheels are on the west, on the new one.
On the new one.
There's two different trucks we're talking here.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
It was definitely the wheels on the Western Star.
Right, that was on the new one.
All right, so would it have been brakes on the freight line on the older truck?
The older truck.
Well, it says brakes on, brakes on both of them.
Says brakes on both.
Well, if it done the, but the thirteen, seventeen-hundred-dollar one, that's on the...
Yes.
That's on the freight liner?
Yeah.
With the thirty-three-hundreds on the Western Star?
Yeah, as well as the four-seventy-three.
We had the problem with the rear end hubs.
The four-seventy-three, that's on the Western Star also.
It did some damage.
Just said brakes and towing, well, I'm not...
That's not gonna be under warranty.
No, no, if it was neglect, no.
No.
It seemed, well...
Can you second check this down?
It called me in hell when I had my truck towed, I usually fix yours more than you.
I have to, so, yeah. You know what I mean.
You guys don't work for the town either.
That's true.
I've got one Earl's Truck Repair on nine-three-nineteen for seventeen-eighty-eight oh-nine.
Yep.
That discusses passenger side brakes hanging up, found right rear wheel hanging up, replaced brakes and slack adjusters on rear axle, thread valve was not releasing causing brake light to stay on, replaced valve, replaced ABS transmitter. There's a four-hundred-seventy-three-dollar charge that is for on-the-road repair service, brakes getting hot, found scam hanging up, needs to come to our shop, heavy-duty wrecker fleet was a zero charge, so maybe that wasn't, oh, yeah, heavy wrecker service from transfer station to our shop, our wrecker was on the way back from Burlington, so we picked up the vehicle on our way home, no charge, that's why it's a zero. And then, the next charge is removed and replaced slack adjuster, found wheel seal we just installed weeping, replaced at no charge. Then, there's a three-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-two-dollar charge, heavy wrecker service from Florence Crush Stone to our shop, and right rear wheels, this is the one for the Western Star, fell off, replaced hub, drum, wheel seal, and both wheels, took to Ray Beans to be swapped over, Beans billed customer directly.
Oh, so it's...
Changed the tires.
Changed the tires, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, it's unfortunate, but it is what it is.
No, I agree, I got the phone call, and I raced out there, and Josh was there explaining the situation, and it was not a good day to be on the truck.
No.
But, no, I will use that, I've already mentioned, asked about the protocol for inspecting trucks, but I'll reinforce the board's view that that's a good idea to make sure we have a sharp procedure for checking out trucks each day before you go out.
Then I got one, then I got one more to do with vehicles.
Yep.
Central Vermont Truck Repair, you've got, looks like three fire engines, one for nine-twenty-three, one for seven-eighty-three, but then you got one for over two thousand dollars, what's, I mean, it looks like it was changing the oil, maybe inspecting them, whatever they have to do, but that two thousand dollar one, I'm wondering what made that one so high?
What I'm there, I mentioned batteries, but...
Two thousand fifty-one dollars and two cents, service inspection for three hundred thirteen bucks, replaced batteries, replaced rear brake shoes and drums.
Okay.
Service inspection, nine-hundred-twenty-three-twenty-three, service inspection, repair control for AC, reinstall temp control and reconnect wires to switch, replace door open switch on right front compartment, replace purge valve on air dryer. And the next one for seven-eighty-three forty-eight, service tightened pump packing, change oil in front pump bushing, needs new front diaphragm, repair lube hose for turntable bearing, reroute hydraulic hoses for left side outrigger.
So it was brakes on that?
Yeah. That's the first time we've done brakes on that truck, I'm pretty sure. It's a two thousand ten vehicle, I believe, ten years, eleven years old. But it makes sense.
The pumper is two thousand one, that was the first bill.
Yeah.
The KME pumper, two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten.
And the ladder, nineteen ninety-eight.
Did I buy it? Any other questions?
Well, I see, apparently we paid off our sewer bond.
One of the smaller sewer loans that are outstanding, yes, that was the last payment. And this December, maybe this is where you're going, the last of the highway bond payments will be made.
So that's gonna help our financial picture a little.
It certainly will, certainly will, that'll be about eighty-five thousand dollars a year that we're not going to be spending on that bond payment going forward. It'll be up to you at budget time whether you want to return some or all of that amount to the taxpayers, or rededicate it to somewhere else in the highway fund budget.
Well, we've been using some red ink here.
Highway had a deficit last year, for sure.
So this does look better in the future.
Oh, yeah.
Get our kids all back up a little bit.
That's a big ongoing expense that's now gonna be retiring this year.
When it comes time for, this is all sugared off, we'll have to make some decisions.
I think it's a lesson not to borrow for purposes that won't last as long as the bond payments.
Yeah, yeah.
Those, that was a twenty-year bond on roads that should be replaced or resurfaced every ten years.
Well, you can't blame anybody in particular, but it's a good learning.
Well, I think at that time, though, too, if we remember, the roads were really bad.
Yeah, and that's before my time, I don't remember that, but I know they did a lot of road work twenty years ago.
It must be, what, West Creek?
Yeah, we did a lot of paving with that bond money, if I remember correctly.
And I think surfacing new roads.
Yeah, there was some surfacing new roads, so a lot was done with that bond.
Oh, yeah.
I wouldn't import, but I do remember. Any other questions? And we've got orders that were on tonight's.
Yep.
Tom, any other report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town's new cruiser pickup truck has been delivered to the police department, and it has been decalled and is in service. The only loose end is the department waiting an ordered push bar, which will hopefully soon be installed, and that would complete the outfitting of the new truck, but as I say, it is already in service. The new highway department five-fifty truck has been built and shipped by Cody Chevrolet to Viking Civis for installation of the body, and hopefully we'll get that soon and into service, and retire the old truck for utility work as needed to fill gaps in the new truck. Markowski is making good progress reconstructing the stretch of Whipple Hollow Road between the railroad trestle at the intersection of West Creek Road to the east and Dido's so-called dip to the west. Work began on Whipple Hollow Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, and it is hoped that the main work will be completed on or about the end of this week, September twentieth. I was just there a couple hours ago, and they seem to be on track for that. With Markowski next week doing kind of pre-paving prep of both Whipple Hollow Road and West Creek Road, again, to get ready for the pavers, who now it appears will be here the following week, beginning their paving as early as Monday, September thirtieth. So that was good that we were able to get them a little quicker than we otherwise were planning on, and that'll, I think, please Almia, especially people driving through all that dust and loose gravel and what have you.
I was there today, it's dusty over there.
They were watering it yesterday, but, yeah, the dust blows up quickly.
Yeah, with the water, all that does is makes it stick to your vehicle, even worse.
Yes.
Good undercoating.
Yeah.
The truck route widening project on West Creek Road was done Monday, September sixteenth, and the Almia parcel at which they had raised a building a year or two ago, and across from Joel Robbins place, it will hopefully allow a little bit more room if there are conflicts between trucks going in both lanes in opposite directions. We've used the material excavated to kind of fatten up Kendall Hill Road toward the bottom of that hill at the intersection.
I didn't, I was over there today, looked at, I was kind of disappointed the way the bank, it didn't really take off so much of that, but I thought it was gonna just...
Were you worried about line of sight?
Line of sight, it wasn't as good as I thought it was gonna be.
We did...
Yeah, no, I...
I expected to be a little bit further.
Well, yeah, I guess, I expected, and I think we're...
And a little bit more road.
Off, well, coming up truck, Kendall Hill Truck Route, whatever you want to call it, it's a truck route.
Bigger, yeah.
It really needs to be on the right, it needs to be out, and the pavement needs to be extended out there, because nobody's gonna drive off the edge of the road.
We already do have plans to talk with DNF when they're in town for these other projects, to put some asphalt down there.
Get a little there, but I, I think you need to go further back on that.
That'd be another question with Almia, we have told them, we have told them that we'd stay within our right-of-way, but encroach on their land to do this, but if we wanted to do more, we'd have to...
To me, John, it only looked like they went a couple of feet.
They didn't go very far.
They didn't go very far.
Well, we only have twenty-five feet from the center line to stay within our right-of-way.
And it is a wide corner.
But, I mean, I'm happy to see how this kind of...
I don't think it's gonna do what we thought it was gonna do, in my opinion.
Well, what we did isn't gonna, because I think we all thought there was gonna be a little more.
Yeah, that's my assumption.
They certainly did not hit the ledge which we were worried about, so I don't know that that's gonna be a problem, if we do want to expand.
Well, yeah, see, okay, so they didn't, I wondered if that's why they just did what they did, because they hit the ledge.
I would like to bring it up to them again, see if that could be expanded a little bit further and a little more.
Well, the whole, the whole thing, yeah. And then you move the center line over...
Then you move your center line over, so when you pave it, then you got the white swing.
We do have our quarterly Almia meeting coming up in October, maybe that'd be a chance to kind of see how they like this, and whether they'd be willing to do more for us.
I don't know if you're gonna be paving, so I don't, personally, you gotta make contact with most of them.
Well, yeah, because if you got the pavers coming in two weeks, if you could possibly get it all done at once and done.
Is that the sense of the board?
If Almia will allow them to dig in there further.
I don't know if they...
They oughta push that out there.
Well, they say well, now's the time to do it.
Yeah, might as well.
The digging is such, if they can dig it.
Let's go for it now.
It won't take very long to do that.
Yeah, but if they say no, then, no.
If they say no, I guess we live with it.
We live with it, but I really think it needs to be different than it is.
Do you have any parameters in mind, how many more feet you'd like to go in?
I'd be happy to go over there.
I'd be happy to go over there and show you, yeah.
You do.
I can't do it this week, but next week, if you want to meet over there someday.
Sure.
I'm, you know, my thoughts on it.
I'll give you both a call, we can kind of meet on site.
Okay, yeah.
With Dennis, maybe, over at Almia.
Okay.
Maybe even Joe, he drives a big truck.
I was over by there when they were digging, and I was curious as to how they were making out, tearing that up, I figured he'd run around the ledge.
I know that, that was a concern.
But if it's diggable, and Almia will let them push that back ten, twelve feet.
Because the line of sight, looking up West Creek Road, too, would be...
Because it wouldn't hurt if it's possible to even have a little ditch for the water to go around, not have to come on the road often, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
For drainage.
For drainage, yeah.
If the digging will permit it.
Yep.
I can't, I'd be surprised if they don't run into hard digging there.
Yeah, I don't know, well, the house was there with a cellar hole, so who knows?
So far, it went pretty well, but that was only, as you said, a pretty narrow project.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
They were able, they did that with our own machine, too, I guess.
That's right, well, actually, we have our rented machine.
Rented machine, that's another story.
So, yeah, it'll be later in the town manager's report, you stay tuned.
When is that next Almia meeting, Justin's?
I think it's, I don't know the date, I can email that to you. That's right, you're a new member, I will remind you.
Thanks.
Okay, so thank you for that. The Lift Tech Garage reports that the hydraulic pump, which they did check out, is sound, and that the machine is now ready for pickup. The good news is that there's an extended warranty in place, the bad news is that despite sixty hours of labor, Lift Tech could not determine the source of the metal shavings or fragments originally found in the hydraulic system. So it seems to be something of a mystery, according to Chad's voicemail to me this afternoon, he had just spoken to them, they said, "Look, we've gone over top to bottom, we don't know where this problem came from, but the hydraulic system is sound and the pump is sound."
How many hours on that machine?
Six, I'm sorry, on the machine?
Yeah.
I don't know, I can get that.
Well, it's been warranty, it's fairly...
It's still under warranty at all?
Yeah, it is. That's gonna be found out.
But, but, okay, my question's gonna be, they didn't find anything wrong with it, is the warranty gonna cover sixty hour, or that sixty hours of labor?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because sometimes, if they don't find anything wrong...
I think it's a phantom issue.
It won't, they won't cover it.
Right. Chad did say that they were working on a bill, so I don't know whether they're gonna give us a break against the sixty or what, but we will learn more.
How much an hour?
Probably a hundred an hour.
We haven't had that machine too long, it's a couple of years.
Oh, yeah.
And let me, let me...
It's not any more than that.
At least a hundred in that range.
It's no more than that, I don't think. That's fairly new.
It seems like the original warranty might even be in effect, but...
That's what I was...
There is a warranty in effect, the question is, as Dave says, whether it would be covered for labor done on a problem that they couldn't identify, that's your concern.
Yeah.
Could get a kickback.
But that metal came from somewhere.
I agree.
They haven't paid the bill yet, I assume.
I'm sorry?
We haven't paid the bill yet.
Oh, no, we haven't seen a bill.
Haven't got it, yeah.
Haven't seen a bill.
We got a little, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, in my thoughts, if you got this problem, it's still got warranty on it, maybe it should find a new home.
Well, it's not that old a machine, you should dig into it until they find out what the hell happened.
But, flip side is, if that metal's gone through all those hydraulic cylinders and everything else...
It's the beginning of trouble.
It's the beginning of trouble, exactly, so I think, you know, at least we need to keep that thought in mind.
Can't grin and bear it.
No, because if it's broke down once a month for the next however long we own it.
Yep.
So, just my thoughts.
Yeah. You've got experience with that stuff, too, so you know what the hell's going on.
On Wednesday, September eleventh, at ten, there was a brief update meeting with officials from FEMA, and good progress apparently has been made to document to their satisfaction our damages from the April fifteenth storm. They have a few questions which we will be answering shortly, and hopefully that will move the process forward to getting compensation in the neighborhood of ten to twelve thousand dollars for the costs we incurred for dealing with that storm. The town's external audit began here in the town offices this past Monday, the sixteenth, should largely wrap up tomorrow, maybe one follow-up day next week. The fall issue of the town's quarterly newsletter has gone out to the printers with a mailing to follow to highlight all the fun things to see and do this time of year in the Sunshine Village. Speaking of fun things to see and do, the band Satin and Steel will be performing a concert open to all free of charge at the recreation area on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from three PM to six PM. This is actually a rain makeup for the concert that was originally planned for Pittsburgh Day, and was and is made possible through a donation from our friends at Almia. Our other friends at the village farm have agreed to assist with the hosting duties at the rec. More fun things to do in Pittsburgh, the Haunted House event's coming up, maybe you want to mention chief, what's new and different about the event this year, which will take place Fridays and Saturdays, September twenty-one, twenty-one, and twenty-seven and twenty-eight, does that sound right?
October.
I'm sorry, I've got the wrong month.
You've got the wrong month, and it's a nine...
So we're talking about eighteenth and nineteenth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth.
Yeah, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's better. Might not be there on those other days.
Yes.
As far as I know, there's gonna be some major scene changes this year, so stay tuned.
Any difference on pricing?
Nope, prices stayed the same, we try to keep it family-friendly.
Yeah, that's been the same for many years. That's been the same for many years.
Children, we've kept it for, gosh, at least ten, twelve years, if not longer.
Yeah.
Uh, it's five dollars for children under twelve. Twelve and up is ten dollars. And there's all kinds of refreshments and food and fun for everybody. So, looking forward to it.
Um, the town's new Facebook page is up and running and, uh, thanks to Alicia, who's agreed to be our, uh, kind of gatekeeper at Facebook. And we have a notice of that event, um, in the outgoing newsletter, so kind of dinosaur technology announcing the newer technology. We'll also put that notice on the website and, um, any other way we can do that to send the word out. I've got a mass email going out tomorrow about it. Hopefully that'll generate more friends of the town. Um, the town's tenth annual staff appreciation picnic will take place Friday, September twentieth from twelve noon to two PM. Also invited are members of the SLIP Board and the Water and Sewer Commission.
What was that again, please?
Um, Friday from twelve to two at the rec area.
Nice.
Emphasis on the twelve. We get started early. People start petering out about one thirty something.
So get there early.
Yeah, if you want, if you want.
They want the good food.
Yeah. I'm told Jeff Biasusi will be bringing venison chili to go with hot dogs and hamburgers.
Not mine this time. Are you shutting off? I think.
So that's it for me.
Oh, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any questions for the town manager? Hearing none. Do we have any remarks from the SLIP Board this evening?
Yeah, I got a few. I always have a few. Uh, dun ta dun. Okay, so at Rutland Regional last night, uh, I'm on the Clean Water Advisory Committee. The, a couple of things. The new revised basin plan is set to go out to the public October seventh for comments. Uh, another thing that was discussed, uh, Chittenden has been doing this for a number of years. They've been testing their own water to get a handle on if they have any problems, you know, what's leaving the town, whatever. There's, um, testing available through the state that Rutland, um, Conservation District has been doing.
You mean, you mean the natural waterways?
Natural water stuff, right? Brooks and streams.
Brooks and streams, yes, Brooks, yes, that's what I'm, yeah. And, but it's limited as far as its funding. So what was brought up last night as a thought was that maybe towns would wanna start testing some of their own brooks and streams to get a handle on whether there are problems or not. So that, because the way Chittenden looked at it, they didn't feel that they really had any problems, yet they were kind of being told that they did. So they have taken it upon themselves to find that they really don't have much for problems, in a nutshell. So it was brought up that, you know, because there's a very limited amount of money for this testing, that maybe towns would wanna start doing some of their own. That way, if we don't have any problems, we don't get pulled into this group of people that are causing problems.
Having problems, yeah.
If we can prove over, over the years.
I have an idea what they mean by problems with the water.
Uh, E. coli, phosphorus, uh, I can give you the list, what they test. Yeah, uh, trying to think where it is here. It's here somewhere. But anyway, yes, uh, yeah, nitrogen, phosphorus, E. coli, TSS, and turbidity. Those are a bunch of the tests that they do. So, I just thought before we start down our budget process that that's something for everybody to just at least think about. It costs, costs Chittenden around seven thousand dollars a year to test theirs. They test it. Uh, I think they start April, May, June, July, August, September, Oc- they're doing six or seven months. Uh, the Conservation District is only doing two or three months.
And which bodies of water do we know that they're testing?
They're, well, they'd be doing, what, the upper end of Furnace Brook.
Okay.
They're doing, what other streams have they got that come out of there, out of Chittenden?
Okay, so the idea is waters passing through and leaving the town?
Leaving the town, yeah. So for us, it would be like Furnace Brook.
Sugar Hollow Brook.
Sugar Hollow Brook and.
What else we got?
I don't know, probably.
You couldn't do, uh, Craig, that's for sure. Who knows what's in there?
Well, you know, I mean, it would, well, in a way, you could do Otter Creek where it enters Pittsburgh and where it exits.
Yeah, you could do that.
And, you know, see if it's cleaner or dirtier when it leaves here. I mean, that's, you know, because that's part of the thought process is a state keeps spending all this money.
Yeah.
And they're just like throwing darts, hoping they hit a problem versus.
They know it all ends up in Lake, Lake Champlain.
Spending, spending the money to do the testing to find, to narrow down where the problems are and then fix them. So, again, that's.
Instead of blaming just the farmers in Madison County.
Well, the farmers are the, you know, every, whatever.
Is there anything more to the testing than collecting samples and mailing them in a package to some testing outfit, or how does it work?
That's pretty much, yeah. They, they use, uh, Bernie McGee, Bernie McGee, I think, is the guy that does it for Chittenden. He just goes around, they have spots that they just check in.
Check in.
And then they, you know, if there's, if it rained yesterday and he's taking it today, he marks down that kind of stuff, so there's, you know, some data to try to sort out, because obviously it's gonna be worse after a rainstorm than it would be, you know, Sunday after it's been dry for a whole week, so.
The state has received a lot of federal money for this.
Well.
And they should be divvying out a little bit to the towns to kind of help them along.
And they kind of arjo with the new road permit requirement that you clean up your roads and ditches so you're not sloughing off eroded material that'll end up in Lake Champlain.
Right.
It's another reason why we got the grant for the salt shed.
Yeah.
Is to try to keep the salt and sand from leaching out into the lake. So they're lot, almost, almost, anytime you want grant money from the state now, you really need to have a water quality component to it.
Well, I'm just beginning to see this water quality thing, because the farmers are gonna catch hell.
Oh, yeah.
And the ten million no trees.
All these loggers are, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I know they're big on these bridges, you know, on logging jobs and all that.
We're, we're required to sample our water where it leaves our, my property.
Oh, yeah.
To run off from our mill yard.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, there's that, um, do we, because I've had some questions. Do we want to discuss what was discussed about the Blue House so the public knows?
Oh, um, I can tell you that, um, the zoning officer has been asked to look into the situation and not treat anybody as above or beneath the laws of Pittsburgh. Um, I don't know what progress he's made to date, but I know he plans to look into that and follow up with the school administration about the situation.
And you wanted the other part too, from our attorney? I mean, the.
Well, we, I don't know that I want to disclose advice from our legal counsel.
Okay, okay.
In public session. If, maybe if you want to let me know what you had in mind, we could have that discussion. I mean, I don't think there's any efforts underway now to pursue the possible, um, adjustment to the tax state, tax status of that building, if that's what you're wondering.
Okay, that's, that's what I was talking about, yeah, so, because that's what's been asked, and I think the public has a right to know.
I think, I think, I think the board has taken the position that while it seems to be a stretch to call residency for the school custodian as a school purpose, it could be argued that that is a school-related, um, activity and therefore remaining within their tax exempt status.
That's what I think people wanted to know.
Yeah.
Um. I think that's it.
Anybody else? At least you know. Hey, Joe, no? Public comment? We've got some public here tonight. Do we have a, any public comment?
They're here for specific purposes.
Oh, okay.
Hearing none. Old business. This, the discussion of the Furnace Road concerns.
Uh, yes, I did actually, there's a couple of things. First of all, um, neither, um, Chad, you, Jim, who's been here fourteen years, nor Greg Eastman, who's been here eleven, has any memory of relocation of the speed limit sign that we were discussing the other day. However, uh, as I reflect on the whole situation, uh, I believe, and I think we're gonna ask the highway crew to accommodate this, that, that thirty-five mile, that first thirty-five mile an hour sign that you see from, coming from Route seven should be moved to behind the sharp curve. It doesn't make any sense to encourage people to accelerate from thirty to thirty-five just before the curve.
I agree.
And I think the installation of a safe twenty-five speed recommendation before that curve, just like we have on the far side of the curve, makes sense.
Yep.
So that is my plan as we sit here.
So go for it.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Yep.
Will it solve the problem? No, but it will help, I think.
Might help, might help.
Yeah, and there was a speed study done out there, wasn't there?
There was.
Have we, have we talked about the results of that?
We have, and we learned from the friends at the Regional Plan and Commission that the average speed is about thirty-two, thirty-three miles per hour. So it does justify a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, but we all know that that is a dangerous curve with somebody who lives on it, who's quite concerned about it. And I don't think it would be a real problem to, um, simply move that speed limit a few, um, tenths of a mile further.
And like Joe said, personally, the landlord should be a little more.
I agree.
Trying to cut some of that back to see, so.
We would like to see better cooperation for sightlines, but we haven't gotten that cooperation unfortunately.
Can't have it both ways, I guess.
Oh, I've been advocating overhaul in that corner for, since I've been on the board. And I've never got the full backing of the board at any point to ever pursue that. Maybe this is a time.
Maybe.
If others are thinking that it's a good idea to, to, to run it by.
It sounds like a condemnation proceeding, which I don't think would go down well with homeowners.
No, I don't think it is.
To go into their property to reconfigure the, the drive, the curve.
Uh, well.
How far back is that right away?
We don't even know where our right of way is.
Well, the se- the, the center line, um, twenty-five feet from the center line is the right of way.
That might take in quite a lot of the.
Well, it, it will allow us to remove some of the invasive honeysuckle outside of their fence line, yes. But if you wanna make a real difference on that curve, you'd wanna go substantially further in.
You'd have to have some additional right of way.
Right.
Right.
Uh, but for many reasons, snow plowing, visibility, uh, I mean, there's a lot of good reasons why that. That's one of our most blind corners we've got on any of our town roads.
What about this idea that once these minor changes that we've just discussed have been made?
See how it works.
That we pursue a correspondence with the family to say, the town has bent over backwards to help you out. What do you think about allowing for some brush cutting along the, um, right of way edges? Maybe that would, maybe that'd be a good time to make the approach.
Sure, or at least, you know, see if these changes have.
Or if they've helped.
Helped as much as they would like, and if not, then we're in a position where we say, what about this?
Yeah, yeah.
If we had to plant them ahead, back further or something, I mean, it might be a way of making everybody happy.
I think the issue from their point of view is that they have viewed all their trees that are right along that curve as kind of a privacy barrier.
Well, it's understandable.
And I can understand that.
Well, yeah.
But.
But as you said, you can't have everything, yeah.
Sometimes it's hard.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how about we go to Lister's office staffing?
Yeah, we do have, um, Linda Trask here. Um, I would like to point out that, um, I had a brief chat with, uh, Linda and Nick, um, our Lister, yesterday at the office and told them that, yes, um, we have put Lisa Wright on retainer. In fact, they were well aware of it because they, uh, Lisa, I'm sorry, Linda's already worked once or twice with Lisa here in the office, um, and I think have gotten some comfort that, um, the office, while it may be a little bit behind on recording of transfers and inputting data, it's not a critically dire situation in the Lister's office. In other words, our previous, uh, grant list was lodged and we were able to issue tax bills. Um, but nevertheless, the work does pile up in the sense of transfers that need to be processed and in following up on permits that have been issued to, so we can assess the new construction and/or to investigate and act on situations where we see construction without a permit. That's also important.
That's, oh, yeah.
Um, and, uh, toward that end, I would point out that we do have a proposal, um, which I think we could probably discuss in executive session on the possibility of someone coming to work for the town to do four to six hours a week of continuing training and education for Nicholas Michael to make him more fully functional as a Lister. Deemed to be a short-term consultation sort of relationship. That's how it's been presented. I think you've seen the letter from the person. And I do have a little information about, um, possible compensation if you want to discuss that in executive session.
That's where it belongs.
I think so. Did you wanna have any kind of opportunity to update the board on how things are going in the Lister's office?
Well, I see Lisa again tomorrow. She's gonna be here tomorrow morning. I had been to a class today in Pillington, so I was kind of updating things that, notes that I might wanna address with her while I can grab her when she's here. But, um, while she said we don't have the tenant yet, I remember when she first started, we were gonna have her wait a week because Nick wasn't available that first Thursday. And, um, on the phone, she said, well, actually, not everybody, all three have to be there at once, but she thought we oughta just dive in because though the grand list was okay, um, the, the more stuff piles up and gets behind, the easier it is for mistakes to happen and stuff get lost. So she thought we oughta just dive into it. So we've been doing that, but she's kind of had to check and see where we were in our, um, vision stuff after the end of the year to see that that was all good to go for the, the new twenty-twenty information to be in there. And she wanted us to copy more deeds to go with the transfers, so she can just check the deeds to make sure the transfers are appropriate into the whole name or different parties. So we've been doing a lot of that and getting that ready for her. So she'll be here tomorrow. Uh, but we, I kind of tried to run a report with vision stuff, but it looks like we might have thirty permits or so out there. And those haven't been even looked at. Um, and granted, some of them probably won't be finished and may not till next year. But usually, the late summer and fall is when previous listers have kind of dove into, you know, the grand list is done and try to get stuff looked at before you've got snowbanks and ice and snow days and all that stuff. It's kind of hard to measure some stuff. Plus, it's messy or going into people's houses if you have to go into them and have the time to. So, uh, they usually try to get as much as they can that's done and put a percentage on how much the other's done and then try to get it through the winter or early, early spring. But once you start hitting March, we have personal property stuff to send out to everybody. We have to get ready for change of appraisals, getting the grant list ready. I mean, there's a lot of work to do from March through June.
And of course, March is town meeting, at which time we'll figure out what the future of the Lister's office might be.
So that's kind of an awkward time to have experience and have stuff up to date to do your next grand list with. So, um, I think she'll help us with that, but I'm just thinking, in my head, if she's only here four days a week, I'm trying to.
Four hours a week. You mean, you mean four hours a week?
Uh.
You said four days a week.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant three to four hours, yeah, four hours or so.
Yep.
And, um, so if she just comes during that time to get us up to speed, get all the transfers in and do thirty permits to check in just that short amount of time, plus get them into the computer, somehow that doesn't seem like a lot of time.
I guess the question is, what role is Nick playing? Will he be able to take on some of this load that Lisa has identified? Or is this all work that only Lisa is capable of doing?
Um, I'm not sure exactly what. Lisa had something in the contract about, obviously, if he's there with her doing this stuff, he will learn something watching her do it.
Mm-hmm.
But as far as in-depth training in that amount of time, it sounds like she's doing more trying to keep us from syncing and get stuff into the computer and keep stuff up to date.
Right.
And solve problems from people that walk in that we can't quite figure out yet.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, so I don't know how much. I think she could probably do some training as just Lister, um, a little bit. I don't know how much he could be in tune to doing it on his own. I think he could do transfers and put in the simplistic ones, the ones that are straightforward and are split up and combined and all of that. Um, as far as the inspections, I think she, I think he would really need Lisa for a while to, um, oversee putting in the values of stuff they find in inspections, how we address that in the computer. Um, what percentage is done, not done, certain kinds of building materials, where we put that in there so the computer can evaluate that. So he hasn't done any of that yet, um, hope that's where we're landing inspections.
Right.
So that would be.
So you think that maybe. So you think that maybe Nick might benefit beyond what Lisa's offering, maybe for a little bit more hands-on training in the office?
I think that would help get him quicker up to what we do. And classes help, but, um, when you go to the classes and you haven't done any hands-on.
Right, it's kind of abstract.
Yeah, you don't, you don't understand how to process what they're telling you because you don't know where you use it, what you use it for. Um, he would get more help following someone through the process of going out, doing inspection, uh, telling what you look for when you're out there, um, where you put it in the computer when you come back, um, the fact that you underwritten vision and enumerate for the billing values and checking tax code, you know, whether residents, non-residents, um, if there's transfers, making sure that that's all quoted right. So, yeah, that would, there's a lot to that. That would help him for a while anyway. Um, I guess we get some help going. And I think he's realizing he needs a little more help. In fact, he was going to try to be here, but we had a class today up at Killington.
Okay.
And it didn't end before thirty, and he had a call to do a closing at seven.
Yep.
So he said he couldn't make it, but to let me know.
Okay. And I think talking with Nick and Linda, Nick, I think, was also in agreement that if it, if it was available to him, he certainly would be pleased to have additional help and support in that office beyond Lisa. Okay. Subject to the details of it all.
Right. And one thing, following up on our possibility of going to an assessor/Lister system, did you get a chance to look into how that would work? I mean, I, I learned today how it would work, but did you have a chance?
Well, all I've got so far is the opinion from VLCT about the three different options the town has, one of which is to go with, um, a professional assessor and, and disband the listers altogether through a town vote at town meeting. And the other option's being, um, hiring a consultant to assist the listers as we have. Uh, and the other is to recruit more listers, although the skill set that you need is hard to come by in the general population.
Yeah.
What, what else did you pick up?
Well, the ladies that we sat with, it was what, two different? Well, it was probably three different towns, but there was two different towns. And I asked them whether they used listers or assessors. Both of them used assessors, but they also have listers. So it's a combination. You've got the assessor and then you've got the listers. So.
Did they discuss the different roles that they were playing in those towns? Like is the lister just a level staff or?
No, that's, oh.
Go ahead.
Well, so they, they use their assessor to do more of the on the, on the ground footwork.
Okay.
Um, but then use like the Board of Listers, they thought was like the really good, well, like a good checks and balance system, like they kind of just really.
Right. The list, the listers are kind of, kind of a, a block, but you've got your assessor that you're paying.
Big bucks.
Pretty good money.
Yeah.
And then you've got your listers. And so if the public comes in, they interact with the listers. So you're not interrupting your higher paid person.
Right.
But, so then, let's just say you come in and the assessor says your house is worth a hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
And you say, no, it's worth eighty.
Mm-hmm.
So now you've got the assessor and you've got the listers in the middle, and the listers take both sides of the story and try to straighten it out as to, okay, no, his house is worth ninety-five thou, or, or it's worth a hundred, or it's worth eighty.
Yeah.
But they are a, a checks and balance between the assessor and the public. That's the way they, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was kind of the way they're using them.
Okay.
So.
It's working. They're happy.
They're, they're, they seem to be very happy with it, yes.
Do you remember what towns they came from? Just curious. Well, Noah's asking a lot.
Was it Duxbury?
Duxbury was one.
One, and I forget what the other one was.
Okay. Well, that's handy to know.
Those name tags again.
Yeah.
Well, they've given us, they've given us the various options available to us, but nothing is, is as helpful as an actual story from an actual town that's working, making it work.
Yeah, that's something to hear from.
I think the old-fashioned Lister system has been changed a lot for a lot of towns.
A lot of more complex tasks have been put on the listers. And when you put in current use on top of it and mastery of computer software like Vision and NIMRIC, that adds a lot of heavy lifting.
Well, they were just talking about NIMRIC, saying how complicated it is.
Well, but the other, the, the kicker in all this is the state is now, they're using NIMRIC, but they're looking for possibly changing to something else.
Right.
Jesus.
And then the question was brought up, okay, if you change to something else to do, was it the grand list? And it's, it's basically the Lister stuff.
Mm-hmm.
The other, the dog licenses and the other stuff that, that are in NIMRIC, that you can buy those programs.
Yep.
The question was asked, okay, well, if you, as the state, change over to this other system, whoever, whatever it is, will NIMRIC still be around to handle these other things?
Or not.
Or not. And we didn't get what I would call a very straight answer on that.
Well, the head of PBR today at the classes we were at at the very end addressed that just a little bit because they've been emailing listers in various towns to get feedback about what they thought they needed in the system. And she said that originally it would be mostly the grand list that they were trying to deal with. So that, for instance, some towns have their assessing system through NIMRIC. And in some ways, that's a little antiquated. They've tried to up it a little bit. Um, but some towns have ProVal, Vision, um, other things. So originally, she said that probably towns that still had NIMRIC as an assessing system would still stay that way for a little bit. It would be mostly trying to address the grand list. Um, and they wouldn't change it all at once. They're looking about maybe a year and a half to two years and getting two or three towns to try it as a pilot first to see how it goes and get the kinks out before they just try to do it statewide. So that's their thoughts, and they don't know whether it's going to be NIMRIC or others. But if it's NIMRIC, they're working on needing a lot more security coverage for NIMRIC if they're going to be using that. So that's kind of an update.
Okay, yeah, that was sort of what we heard, but it just, there wasn't, you know, people were concerned that, you know, you're changing part of the system possibly to something else.
Unintended consequences.
And one of the comments that wasn't made, it was made offhand, is like, well, if, if they take this out of NIMRIC, will it even exist anymore?
Yeah.
So there's, you know, there's, a lot of things happening, not just our listers leaving, but there's a whole lot of other stuff happening too.
And I don't know what the, from what I've heard from Lisa, I asked her about requirements for assessors because of the reason that Nick had gone up to New Court for instance, because Vision was up there, to see if he could sit in on training for Vision while they were already in the state. And, um, that assessor, when I called to check on the appointment times and so forth, I asked him, you know, what he had done for appraisal, and he said, well, he had done some. And he, I guess, didn't know anything about like an assessing system or the NIMRIC system. And so they were getting him classes on that. So I'm not clear about what kind of quality you get in assessors when you search for them. I mean, if it's somebody new that you hire on as an assessor that hasn't had any experience in addressing or assessing towns, I would be a little bit cautious.
Well, we were certainly lucky to have Lisa with some availability because we know that she knows our system and we know she knows this general area. She lives just across the boundary.
And she said that there isn't, Vermont doesn't really have good, um, requirements of qual, qualifications to be a Lister. Maybe you can do a lot on time or take a class and get a certificate. I don't quite know.
Most of these offices were legislated in the eighteen-fifties probably, right?
Oh, I don't know.
A little buying time.
They used to have surveyors of coal that every town had to have, fence sitters and everything else.
Oh, yeah.
Still have fence viewers.
Fence viewers, that's true. And they come in handy.
Still do.
Free warden's, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, and the other thing too is if he had help with the inspections, if what you're investigating is someone that has done them before, the help to that is that, or the benefit of that, I should say, is I would think it would, maybe wrong, but it might cut down the time to get some of the inspections done because some of them have already been like in process, you know? Um, some of them might have already been there once and made an assessment of where they're at in their building process and understand what they've already put into the computer versus the percentage of what needs to be finished. And they've made lists of those that need to be followed up. So if they just followed up the unfinished stuff and went to some of those and see if they're done and get them, um, they kind of have an idea about some of them already, what's happening on the property. Whereas somebody just going out there that is not promoting the property, they have to go out, see what the permit was for, look at what they've already done and try to do that from scratch sort of, which takes a little more time. And I'm sure Lisa can probably do it fairly fast because she's probably used to doing it, even if she's not familiar with the property, but, but still, she's getting.
Limited time and high rates.
High rates in a short amount of time, it takes years.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Thanks very much, Linda.
All right, thank you, Linda. All right, we'll move on to, uh.
I don't know if you wanted to take Wayne here. He's got some comments maybe about the shed roof situation at the transfer station. Um, as you know, we did a request for proposals and made calls to various contractors in the Rutland-Pittsburgh area, and have only been able to scare two proposals together. Um, obviously, one, which is local, is, um, far less expensive, an approach. Uh, and I think it does the trick whether you're talking about just the shed or the compactor coverage. Um, but I know Wayne, um, knows that we're considering both options, just fixing the roof that leaks versus extending it over the garbage compactor. This would probably be a good time to give us your thoughts on that.
Yeah, with the garbage compactor, when you have this ice and snow in the wintertime, it freezes solid. It kicks the machine out to get it to move. I've actually, once was able to break the ice from up above, and twice I had to come down into it to break the ice, which is not very safe.
No.
It fills up. I've seen it all the way up to the top with snow and ice. I'm not going to shovel it out. There's no way you can.
No.
If you, uh, um, and that water is going into those, in there. Yeah, it melts later, but when's it going to melt? After they've already weighed it? Uh, it's, it's always, always blowing through there. The roof on the building does leak. It's even coming down into the wiring lines. I don't think much has been done there for many, many, many years.
What do you mean by that?
As far as the transfer building.
Yeah, right.
And even after the compactor was put in.
Right.
They did put a different system in from a hand to a button.
Mm-hmm.
But, but I think it's time to update it a little bit, get it so that the wind, the windows and damaging things and everything else, I just, uh, I like the idea of putting the roof on the building, but if you're going to go to the cost of that, you might as well put it over the compactor and stop paying for the extra you put in there.
Now, I do want to intercede here and just say that for whatever it's worth, I have heard a second time today from Randy DePron, our contact at Casella, who in his opinion states that he doesn't think there's a lot of extra weight associated with the precipitation getting in. He, he notes that the compactor is not watertight so that lots of water can escape before it gets to the scales. However, he does point out, and this is in a long voicemail to me today, that frozen snow, in fact, um, could be a factor, um, if that gets in and, and freezes up. Um, he said that could be a factor in weight, but he, he believes that there's not much, uh, weight variation. I do have numbers from the different quarters of the year, and I don't know, um, if you'd want to hear those, but, um, in the most recent quarterly reports, the first quarter of the year, January to March, obviously, has a, uh, tonnage of fifty-nine point zero two tons. Second quarter, sixty-nine point zero two tons. Third quarter, seventy-three point seven seven tons. Fourth quarter, sixty-seven point oh three tons. I'm not sure if I see a pattern there, but it tells you about the variations of the tonnage at, at the, um, scales.
I know water's heavy though. If it gets in there and soaks everything, it's got to make a heck of a difference.
But the other thing I'm looking at, everything is all about water quality.
Yeah.
Do we really want that water going in that garbage and then running off?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Well, no, I'm just, I mean, that, it's invariably, that will be one of their next, somebody's, the light's going to go off for somebody, and then we're going to be forced to cover this thing.
If you're going to do some work, your lights will do it all at once and get it done.
Well, and I think, me personally, there was some sticker shock when I saw that.
Yeah, but.
But then, as I thought about it, we're spending five thousand dollars on a little hut to keep our lifeguard dry.
Yeah.
You know, fifteen to put a roof over that thing really is kind of.
And that covers not just the compactor, but the transfer station shed.
Well, the shed too.
The whole shed.
Right.
The whole shed. Now, this, this roof that is proposed to be built over the compactor, will that accommodate any changes that might be in the foreseeable future as far as, if something changes, I mean, this is just, just a roof over it.
But I don't think so.
Yeah, it shouldn't.
The concern had been, what about, you know, trucks dumping stuff there? But we don't let trucks dump there. It's individuals bringing garbage bags and cans.
I don't let anybody back up that fire.
Yeah. And this, this is pretty much just a shed roof.
Yep.
And I can tell you the estimate.
Is there going to be any sides on it or, or canvas sides or curtain sides or anything?
As low as they can with, with the pitch.
Yeah.
Keep it as low as they can. It's going to be higher over the compactor, of course, but it'll cut down on a lot.
Well, sure.
And if we need to, we could even put a, a tarp over the front when we're not there. A slight tarp or something.
There's no pro, problem with water drainage getting away from the bottom of the thing down on the ground. That takes care of itself there.
Yeah, it wouldn't be going into the hopper very little, except whatever blows it.
The, the proposal, Joe, is to pitch the roof away from the door, um, at the transfer station building with wood frame and metal, metal roofing to cover the compact, to keep more weather out. He suggests twenty-two by twenty-four foot shed roof, which also would cover the shed building. It would need to be, um, three, six by six posts on opposite side of the door and one post at the same side of the door. And, um, also have two twenty-four foot beams holding two by twelve rafters with the metal roofing. And again, the quote from the local contractor is fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. He thinks it'll take two weeks. He thinks it can be done by November first.
And that was significantly lower than the other bill too.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's from Chuckie Charbonneau, and the other, the other proposal for a combined both projects is eighteen thousand nine ninety-four.
Both, both.
Both similar approaches.
Quite comparable.
Yeah. Not apples to apples necessarily, but same project coverage, yes.
Okay, now, question. Because of where the transfer station is located in this supposed wetland, blah, 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 are there any special permits we're going to have to need to get this?
Chuckie Charbonneau said he thought yes, is the answer. I'm surprised to hear that, but I can make inquiry and find out from our friends at whatever remains of labor and industry and see what might be required. That, that's what he suggested.
And, and I guess the other question would be, given the fact that we have employees, I mean, we're not building a building, but you're going to have people and employees and whatever walking under this, are there any parameters that we have to?
Like a VOSHA type thing?
Yes.
Labor and Industries might have to take a peek at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, or at least take a peek at the plans and.
Well, there wouldn't be.
Which is ridiculous, but.
But, well, yeah, but.
Because you're not containing anything.
The backside's where everything would go.
Yeah.
Okay? The only time I have to go to the backside is for the, uh, recycle compactor back door. That wouldn't even be near the roof.
No, no. Well, what I'm saying is, you're, you're putting this roof in the air. You're going to have people under it, under it to some degree. All I'm saying is, is there any OSHA, VOSHA, whatever, to deal with the fact that we are putting this?
Putting an overhang.
Putting an overhang and what, are there any specifications we need to meet?
Right, yeah.
So we don't get the thing built and then have somebody come from VOSHA and say.
I think that's certainly the next calls to make, assuming you guys are interested in moving forward.
Yeah. Get a hold of the office, I'll tell you.
Look at the hassle, this salt shed or sand shed.
Well, that's why I'm questioning whether there's. Well, that's why I'm questioning whether there's...
Yep.
Shouldn't be any, but there is.
Well, and they should be happy that we're doing this.
Right.
Because of the garbage water running off. We're, we're lessening that, so they, but it doesn't mean they will be happy.
As you can see where, when the water does come out now when it's raining.
Well, I'm sure you can. You can see.
If the garbage comes out with it, it'll outback.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
State should give us a generous contribution.
But, you know, that brings to mind the old saying that no good deed goes unfor...
That's right. You're right. So is that the consensus of the board? Have John go ahead and delve into this?
Move forward, but also making sure that we have heard from the folks. And if there's anything that I see a red flag about, I will immediately come back to you folks with it. But we'd like to move forward before the snow flies.
Well, we need to, Chuckie needs to know here.
Needs to know.
So he can plan on getting it done, and we need to get it done before winter, so...
Let's make a motion tonight and get it done then. Longer...
Pending.
Pending the...
All right. I'll make a motion that we go ahead with Chuck Charbonneau's...
Barring an unforeseen...
Proposal, barring any unforeseen permit or VOSHA issues.
So we have a motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, say it.
Hopefully, it can be done before ten years from now.
Hank, are you gonna go down with the ribbon cutting?
Yeah.
I was down there a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, for the first time in thirty years.
What was the occasion, by the way?
Eagles at home?
I had to stop at the gate in good directions.
Did you?
Hank referred to it voice when he wants information on the transfer station.
Thanks, Wayne. Thank you.
I can find it.
Last book is a pretty good deal for a...
It's a heck of a deal for you. Okay. I guess we're up with what they're...
Burning ordinance.
Burning ordinance. So we'll go back to that.
Yeah, as you can see, we're not talking about a radical change in the ordinance. All we're asked ultimately from Brad Keith, our current fire warden, is that we change the kind of arbitrary seven PM cutoff for fires to a more flexible seasonal adjusted dusk, which will change depending on the time of year. He's also asked for an elimination of any burn pile size limitation in the village.
Let him, let him decide.
Had been twenty-five square feet, but he felt that he should have the discretion to do better than that.
That's why he wants discretion as to...
So with your permission, we can set a couple of hearing, public hearing dates. I would say October sixteenth and November sixth.
My next two meetings.
No, we would need one gap in between for posting.
Okay.
So the sixteenth of October and November sixth.
Got that public hearings to change that?
To make any ordinance.
So change in the ordinance.
This board ought to be able to do that.
I know, but...
I agree with you.
Yeah, but we, people need to know.
They need to know.
They need to know.
And we might...
A good or bad change, they need to know.
And we might hear things that we haven't even considered.
Exactly. Yeah. So...
We think we know what we're...
Like on our party ordinance.
There you go. We thought that both were like...
Well, Room Seven's taken so long.
Yeah.
Some different ideas.
Yep.
So, all right. So we'll set those dates.
Good.
Okay. New business. Authorize the delinquent tax sale.
Yeah, every year, every year in this time, Mr. Chairman, we identify, it's usually about a dozen taxpayers who meet our eligibility criteria for a tax sale, which means that they're two or more years delinquent and their balance is more than a thousand dollars. And what that generally allows me to do with your authorization is to send letters to these folks. And that usually scares up compliance or payment agreements on about eight or nine of them. And then we get probably the two or three that go right to the edge of a tax sale and either resolve or go to tax sale with a redemption within the one-year period. So I would expect this year to be no different. And I just need authorization to kind of take these first steps, which are, first, to start with a letter, and then, second, for those that don't meet our deadline, engage Gary Cuff, our tax sale attorney, to do title work and start the process, notifying that the people who haven't paid off or made an agreement, that they are responsible for legal fees and costs going forward. And that often does get some more compliance. It's unfortunate, but it is a good discipline to have every year.
And we've had good luck so far, too.
Yeah. Towns get in trouble when they neglect this and they generate a big problem because other people figure they don't have to pay theirs either, and then it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that come up.
You need a motion for that?
We do.
I'll make the motion.
Give John the green light. I'll second that.
We've got a motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, say it.
Thank you.
And our last thing is to consider endorsing the Efforts for Route Three Traffic Speed Study.
Yeah, the Regional Planning Commission actually came to me a year or so ago suggesting improvements to the curve around the Corn Hill Road intersection, because they had seen some traffic data showing accidents in that area. And over time, we have heard, not only from people in that area, but also people toward the south end of that road near the Proctor Town Line, that they believe that area is also unsafe in that it involves a rapid change of speed limit from twenty-five in Proctor to fifty in Pittsburgh.
Yes, that's...
With a curve to go with it, near the Terranova Beach Field. And so what the Regional Planning Commission suggests is that the select board sign off on a letter asking VTранs to perform traffic and safety studies, and that would hopefully be greeted with respect, and they would do those studies and come up with some suggestions, whether it's reconfiguring any parts of the road, or at least considering speed limit adjustments, or at least signage in the area to make it more safe.
Weren't they talking at one point, reconfiguring the way you come off of Corn Hill?
They were. They were talking about that.
That would be a huge improvement to do that.
There and down on the other end. It's ridiculous to me that you're, one, you've got all those houses, you've got a business, a couple businesses, houses. You've got a fairly sharp corner, and you've got entryway to a recreation field.
Yeah.
After that, if you want to bring it up to fifty, okay, but it should be thirty-five, at least around that corner.
Transition.
And in the passing lane, the passing lane runs right up to the entrance to the rec field.
Yeah, it does.
So those are the two issues I have with that.
And we have seven or eight property owners on both ends of that road who have expressed themselves pretty well in emails, which we will submit along with the letter if you guys are willing to sign off.
Yeah. I know we've had accidents on both ends of that, too.
Oh, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Being that the state has full control over this, would it be, any help if you drafted up a letter and we sign it with our recommendations?
Joe.
It's right there.
What we got, right here.
See if we can't get them to move on it.
Well, see, the idea is here, we get on the agenda with this letter, then maybe we go up to their next meeting this fall in Montpelier, and we probably do one of those virtual drives through the road, which they can do fancy things with on their technology.
So I guess we need a motion to...
I saw move.
Second.
We have a motion second to send this letter off. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's another case, that corner near the Corn Hill Road, if they would clean that row of trees out.
Right.
And dig that bank off.
Dig that bank off.
Maybe plant them people a hedge or something if they'd like.
Of course, you know, when you're a hammer, every problem is a nail. When you're a logger, every problem is a tree.
It's a tree.
But you're not wrong.
Or when you're a farmer, you just plow the edges of the road off. So, yeah.
Do you know how quick John got the letter all timed?
See how quick that was, Joe?
See how quick that letter came, Tony?
I lucked through them.
If you ask for your...
Well, that isn't, that isn't quite the letter he asked for, but it's close enough.
In the ballpark, I think.
It's in the ballpark.
It's in there.
I don't know. Does that'll make them move any quicker? Probably won't.
Probably not.
Who knows? We'll give it the old football...
And I think you'll be pleasing a lot of residents on that road that are doing their part.
Well, yeah.
I'd hate to see them reconfigure the road now that just paved it.
Right.
Well, but that's...
At least it's not that too much you gotta do.
It's like, did you guys even look at this when you signed it?
Okay, now what do we have?
Well, see, Hooker signed it in the right place.
Yeah.
Hank Pelkey signed for Joe Gonya. Joe Gonya signed for David Mills. Nobody is, Alicia did sign in the right spot.
Remember we dropped that letter, John?
I'll print it out.
You, I probably, it's kind of a mess. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see it when you, I just handed it to her.
Well, they changed the order of us. That's the problem. We're not in our normal order.
We're in agreement. We're in agreement on it anyway.
Yeah.
So, hell.
I'll take care of it during the break.
And if you do it, we can go stop and re-sign it.
Yeah.
We're gonna re-sign it someplace again.
Yeah.
Disposal of it, whatever.
Gonna give it back to him.
Don't give it back to him.
Again, though, again, though, my name may...
I know.
That might be the big delay of the whole...
Yeah.
My whole, my whole project.
Well, we don't want to give them anything to delay it on.
Gosh, no.
Oh, my goodness.
If that's it, I guess we'll end the meeting and we'll end the next session.